This forum is, candidate's forum, is on the School to Prison Pipeline. It's being sponsored by Racial Justice Now, which is an organization headed by myself and Ms. Maria Holt. My name is Amelia Randall, I'm Professor Randall from the University of Dayton School of Law. And it's also being, we also are part of the Dignity in Schools 2013 National Week of Action. In fact, we're the only parent-headed group in Ohio that is a part of that action, and there's only two groups in Ohio that are doing anything. So I think that we appreciate all the support that Dignity in Schools have given us. To start off, what we would like to do is ask everyone to cut off their cellphones. And so I'm gonna give you 30 seconds for you to reach in and make sure your cellphone is cut off, and I think I gotta do that too. Um, we also are handing out contact forms, and we ask you to please con, uh, complete the contact form and turn it in when you leave. Oh, excuse me.
As Professor Randall said, I'm Maria Holt, co-founder for Dignity in Schools campaign, and I am a parent of a student in Dayton Public Schools, I'm also a community activist, and this issue is especially dear to my heart. I have a son, um, and he attends, um, the all-boys school, so this is a passion of mine. I'd like to see, um, our school district use some more restorative justice and positive behavioral, um, discipline techniques instead of strictly punitive techniques, um, when disciplining children. So I'm excited about the candidates being here, um, running for office to answer some of the questions that are of concern to us as an organization and also to the community.
I wanna just, uh, we'll let the candidates introduce themselves when we go through the first questions. Uh, one of the things I want to do is identify the rules. Uh, we will ask a question, we'll give a little bit of information, ask the question. Uh, we, we use, I read, the candidates for each question has been put in a random order, and we will say who is supposed to speak first, second, third. Uh, and, uh, the candidate will have two minutes to talk. Uh, when we are in with, uh, the last 30 seconds, my student Alan, Alan, you wanna show the 30-second sign? And to the candidate? Yes. That's when you show it to the candidate. At the stop sign, when you're two minutes over, Rodney will hold up the stop sign, because we really wanna stay on time. I'm, I'm giving forewarning people that if you don't stop, I'll just have to interrupt you. And so I'm not being rude, I'm just keeping it moving. Um, okay. So, having said that, we have asked a general question, we have, we've told the candidates that to the extent that they answer a question that's about their platform, they should relay it back to the School to Prison Pipeline, but essentially, this first question is intended to give them an opportunity to talk somewhat about themselves and also about the School to Prison Pipeline.
So the first question is, the School to Prison is a definition. The School to Prison Pipeline is one of the most important human rights challenges, um, for our nation today. The School to Prison Pipeline refers to a national trend of criminalizing rather than educating our nation's children. And the first person that, uh, so we'll ask Mr. Hickman to answer first, please. Um, what is your opinion about mass incarceration and how the School to Prison Pipeline contributes to it? Generally, what do you think needs to be done?
Good evening. My name is Walter Hickman, I'm a newbie. My history in this town is that I'm a lifelong resident, and I'm an retired firefighter and a deputy sheriff. To answer the question, I think that, uh, some of the issues in the school are more of a problem now than what they were before. The punishment for kids now, it's no, you know, it's no longer like throwing a rock or having a little fight out in the street or anything else like that. It's, the ante's been up. And I think it's gonna be very difficult unless we get parents involved, community involved. The, uh, one issue we have with the school right now, where someone played a prank and sent in a message about a bombing of the school. The ante is up on that, and parents need, and teachers need to inform these children of that ante, and that because they got a computer and the things they can do with, if they have to understand, there's a price to pay. The other thing on that is that I think that fights in school right now, as many cameras that the school's got, they should have, they should monitor them, because an individual who's trying to defend themselves should not get the same punishment as the person that's, uh, starting a fight.
Same question?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Hazel Roundtree, I'm a candidate for the Dayton School Board. I've been an educator for over 30 years, both as a classroom teacher, a school counselor, and currently I'm an administrator. I work directly for the president of Wright State University, and I work in the area of civility. One of the things that I focus on is how to ensure that we establish civility on our campus and we ensure positive campus relations. I think that's an issue that will address the School to Pipeline issues. One of the things that I want to underscore is that it's not, the, the, criminalization is not for, just for serious crimes, it's just for any crime. There's a zero tolerance policy that says if, if they say you can't shout and you raise your voice, then you're going, not to be, uh, sent to a counselor's office, as maybe people would do in the past, but you're gonna be directly, uh, intervened by the law enforcement. And that's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. What we need for this situation are several steps. First, we have to create a culture of civility. We expect students to come into campus, uh, come into the classroom, come into the school building, and know about manners. It's this basic good manners, starts with preschool, please and thank you. We, we can't ignore that anymore. That's the first book I bought my granddaughter, Please and Thank You. Spike Lee wrote a book called Please, Baby, Please, and that's the first book I bought my granddaughter, and that's what I tell students, when they come on our campus and they try to talk about, uh, my professors being racial, well, you walked into the classroom, you were loud, you bumped everybody's voice out the way, show some respect. So I think if we teach children respect, then we're gonna reduce the amount of violence and we're gonna create a greater culture of civility, and I really believe that's what's needed. But training for teachers is the first step. Teachers are the most important people in the students' lives, and they're not trained in civility. They're not trained in helping the students to solve problems.
My name is Joe Lacy, um, currently on the Board of Education, I'm currently the Board of Education President, and, um, I have a daughter at Ruskin Elementary School, she's, she's in kindergarten there, and, um, for me, actually, I, having a daughter who, she's in kindergarten there, but she, this is her third year there, so that's, so really, my experience with Ruskin has colored a lot of, of my experience with schools. Ruskin and Belmont currently are the two schools in the system that, that use restorative justice. So, um, I'm not, I'm not only, not only do I have a daughter at Ruskin, I have, I sit on the board for Ruskin as well as the Dayton Board of Education. So I see how restorative justice works, and I see the success that we get with restorative justice, and I want to, uh, I, I do want to expand that beyond the two schools that we have. To your question, um, the extent to which, um, the school, the school discipline system contributes to, um, to the, to the Classroom to Prison Pipeline, um, I, I tend, I tend to believe, yes, it does, especially, um, I'm sure that there are some, that there are districts, especially in the South, that, uh, that are particularly punitive. Um, I do think it needs to, we need to, before I can come to that conclusion about our own system, I think we could use some more study about our system. But, I mean, I'm not gonna wait for study, I really do believe that, that the restorative justice system works, and I would, I would, my, my thinking is expanding that would make more sense for our district and for our community.
Thank you, candidates. With only 5% of the world's population, the United States have 25% of the world's prison population, nearly 50% of all state prisoners are locked up for non-violent crimes. Blacks, particularly young black males, make up the disproportionate share of U.S. prison population. And in 2008, young black men ages 18 to 34 were at least six times more likely to be incarcerated than young white men. Young black males without a high school diploma were more likely to be in prison or in jail and on any given day in 2008 than to be working. The pipeline encompasses the growing use of zero tolerance discipline, school-based arrest, disciplinary alternative schools, and secure detention to marginalize our most at risk youth and deny them access to education.
Zero tolerance disciplinary policies are often the first steps in a child's journey through the pipeline. And basically, zero tolerance, in Ohio, unfortunately, have a law that, uh, requires zero tolerance to some extent. Uh, generally, zero tolerance imposed, severe discipline on students without regard to the individual circumstances. Senate Bill 167, which is going to go through the legislature, would eliminate the state law requiring zero tolerance. Would you support that bill? Would you support a moratorium in Dayton regardless of the bill on suspensions? Under what circumstances would you support that? And, uh, and, and instead substitute a restorative justice, which is another form of discipline, um, that Mr. Lacy talked a little bit about, and positive behavior change, which is another form, form of discipline, um, both of which are known to reduce suspensions. Uh, Mr. Lacy, you actually go first, or?
I go.
Okay.
I am, I am familiar with, is it House Bill 176?
Senate Bill.
Senate Bill 176, I believe.
167.
167.
Senate Bill 167.
It isn't, but it's sponsored by Charleena Taverre, is my understanding, and I, and I have a great feeling of respect for, for Representative Taverre, and, or is she now state senator?
She's state.
She's state senator, Taverre, from Columbus. And, and I, and I do support that bill. But as far as, as, um, but as far as going, as suspending all, or stopping all suspensions, um, I'm not sure that I would go that far there to support that at this, at this point. I mean, I think we do, even though we do have a zero tolerance policy, I believe we have a system, I mean, the, the zero tolerance policy is not that clearly defined, and I, I, I would have to be shown within our system, within the Dayton Public School system, how zero tolerance it is in, in practice, because it's not being so clearly defined, I do believe we, even in schools that do not have restorative justice, I believe there is, there is a lot of intervention going on. Although, in many cases, I think there is extension involved too. Um, I mean, there are political ramifications too for this. I, in, in 2001, when I ran for, when I first ran for school board, I ran against a group of four women who basically spent $250,000 on a, on a campaign that, part of, that a big part of that campaign was more discipline, more discipline. You couldn't turn the TV on without saying, "Our school," without seeing one of their commercials saying, "Our schools need more discipline." More discipline sells, and, and, and that's part of the problem.
Mrs. Roundtree, you're next.
In addition to being a classroom teacher, I'm also trained as an attorney. I graduated with a law degree from University of Dayton School of Law. I happen to have a consultant and a state senator to argue on this particular bill to stop the zero tolerance. So I'm a strong proponent of eliminating that particular form of punishment. As a law student, I worked with an attorney, James Green, on a case where a student was in the, uh, school nurse's office, and she took an aspirin without the nurse's permission because she had cramps, was a very young girl, had menstrual cramps, very unfamiliar with the kind of pain associated with it, and she took an available, uh, over-the-counter aspirin because she thought that would bring her some relief, and she was expelled from school because they had a zero tolerance policy of no drug use. An, an aspirin is a drug, and here's a student in excruciating pain, she takes an aspirin from the school nurse's office, it was unattended, if you want to note that, you know, it was unattended, uh, medicine available to anyone, and the student was expelled. That's what a zero tolerance policy, that's how a zero tolerance policy operates. There's no analysis into the situation, there's no reviewing the circumstances, it's just zero. You did it, boom, you're out. And I think that's the type of, of, of reasoning that we don't want in the schools. If we require educators to have college degrees, if we require principals to have master's degrees, then we should expect them to make some good decisions. And I'm saying that children who misbehave need to be addressed. I believe in more discipline, but I think teachers have to be trained to be disciplinarians, and that will avoid some of the conflicts that occur in the classroom. We have to teach teachers how to be managers, how to control, how to have presence in the classroom. You can have a straight A teacher with beautiful bulletin boards, but if they don't know how to command the attention of their students, they will be in trouble.
Thank you. Mr. Hickman?
I'm a little bit old school. You could do the crime, do the time. But what I think they should do is that you got a lot of things that, a lot of, uh, things that are done in the school that are nonviolent, but do you wanna tolerate drugs? Do you wanna tolerate guns? They have a shotgun, it's a nonviolent crime. This has, it has to be put in perspective. This is not a subject that's lightly, just throw around and say, "Oh, we don't want our kids to get in trouble." But at some point in time, the community, the parents are going to teach these kids. They're gonna have to tell the kids that this is the way it has to be, these are the rules we have to follow. There's no ifs, ands, and buts about it. Thank you.
Thank you. One last comment on the zero tolerance policies. The research shows that there is no evidence that zero tolerance policy makes schools safer or can improve student behavior. In fact, most of the research suggests that the overuse of suspensions and exclusion may actually increase the likelihood of later missed criminal conduct, largely because these kids are home for school, unsupervised, uh, because of parents who have to work.
Schools today rely on law enforcement rather than teachers and administrators to handle minor school misconduct. What role should police officers play in the safety and security of schools? Should there be police officers in schools? Should school resource officers carry guns? Should they have authority to arrest even when there is detention without arrest as possible? Ms. Roundtree, you're first to answer this question.
I guess my, my first response is that training needs to happen. We need to educate. We need to educate teachers, principals, parents, and students on what our expectations are. We have to establish a culture of civility, so police officers have a role in that, but they should be, their role should be that as a trainer. They should come to the schools and be a part of any curriculum that will help the teachers and administrators learn how to keep the law and order into the classroom. I think that it starts with the teacher empowering the teacher, not empowering just a police officer or a resource person. Do I think that there may be some circumstances where the halls might be safer with hall monitors? I do, because I believe in adult supervision. I don't, I don't, I think one of the worst travesties is kicking kids out of school, sending them to the streets, and then they're out on their own, being raised by their peers, being raised by the streets. I would rather have them in the school, in the in-school suspension-type program, and if the police officers could do community policing, where they're educating, where they're establishing relationships, where they're, where they're sharing their resources, you know, to help make the place a safer place, where they're practicing prevention, I think that's what's needed, and the police officers do have a role in that. Parents need to be trained on what the expectations of the school are. The church has a role, community members have a role, police officers have a role, but it's in education and prevention.
Mr. Hickman? Thank you.
To make this perfectly clear, no guns in our schools, none, other than the trained police officer that's there to do his job. Now, what I understand about police officer coming in, I tried to get a statistics on the Dayton school system, but it hasn't arrived to me yet, so I have to kinda skip around a little bit. But we got kids in here in this school that have behavioral problems that educators shouldn't have to be involved in, even being trained. It's enough that, I feel it's enough that they got to teach 35 students or less in a classroom, let alone have to deal with one individual that's gonna take away from the rest of the class. So, the way I feel is that I think that a police officer should be involved for the safety of everyone. Uh, you don't know what kind of situation's gonna come up, you don't know who they called before they were directly confronted. So I think it's safe for all that way. Thank you.
Mr. Lacy?
My, my experience with Dayton Public Schools is that we do use in-school suspensions. We do, actually, to a great degree, we do use in-school suspensions. And, um, I, I guess, I'm not familiar with the aspirin incident, but I'm, I'm not aware that, if that happened at, at Dayton Public Schools, so maybe we'll know later. Um, the, um, also, and with, with regard to police officers, I don't believe that we have any regular police officers, um, that are assigned to a Dayton public school. And, and that's, that's probably more that, that the Dayton Public Schools could not afford to pay the city to do, to have a regular assignment there. But, um, I don't think, I, but I also agree with, um, with, with restorative justice that, that it's, it's probably not useful to have a police officer there unless, unless the situation is out of hand. So, um, that's, yeah, that's all that I have.
Just as a follow-up, um, there are actually police, uh, retired police officers that are the head of Dayton Public School Safety and Security, they were just hired this year, we met with both of them, a retired police officer from Dayton and a retired police officer from Trotwood, um, the school board, I guess, and superintendent felt the need to hire two new police officers, um, at Dayton Board of Education.
Correct.
Growing numbers of school districts employ full-time police officers or school resource officers to patrol middle and high school hallways. With little or no training in working with youth, these officers approach youth as if they are adult perps on the street rather than children in school. The expulsion, the explosion of school-based arrests cannot be attributed to an increase in youth violence. Between 1992 and 2002, school violence actually dropped by about half. Despite the fear generated by a handful of highly-publicized school shootings, schools remain the safest places for young people. Resources that could be put towards improving under-resourced schools are instead used for security and police. School districts spend millions of dollars for police officers and security officers.
I just wanna note that Dayton Public School employs police officers. You can call them school resource officers, but they are licensed under the state and trained under the state as police officers. Uh, we actually met, they have 37, 31, police officers. Now, there's a hierarchy of police officers, so they're trying to like, we're at this level of police office, but they're trained, they have, they have arrest powers, they have, uh, they have been trained to use guns, and while Dayton doesn't authorize their police officers to use guns, uh, they have been trained to do so. So these are not school resource people who are in a safety position, these are police officers who work as school resource peoples. Um, the rise in suspension and expulsion and school-based arrests may be due in part to the rise of high-stake testing. In Dayton, in 2012, and I don't think Dayton does in-school suspension, at least they're not calling it in-school suspension, and now they're not reporting it to the state as in-school suspension. In 2012, Dayton had 5,406 out-of-school suspensions, uh, for African-Americans, 5,406, and 69 of those were for so-called disruptive or disobedient behavior, not for violence, not for drug use or any of those things. So, in high-stakes testing, uh, domestic programs such as the No Child Left for Hyn Act have led to incentivizing schools to push out low-performing students in attempts to increase overall school tests. Do you support eliminating high-stakes testing to the extent that we can? I know that it's dictated to some extent by federal government, but when we can, and what kind of emphasis should we be putting in our teaching on high-stakes testing? And how can we implement programs at, on a local level to ensure that all students, regardless of high or low performance, receive the same opportunity to succeed educationally? Mr. Lacy?
Well, I mean, if you're just gonna say that I'm lying to you and that we do not have in-school suspension when I know we do have in-school suspensions, I mean, what doesn't matter what I say to you if you're going to tell me that I'm not really telling you the truth?
Well, all I can say to you is...
I mean, I know children that have been in...
All I can say to you is we had a series of meetings with the school board staff, and when I, when we asked them, and there were several of us there, who said, "How many in-school suspensions?" They said, "We don't do in-school suspensions." And then when you go to the state website and you pull down the data on the state website, which we did, and you have, "How many in-school suspensions?", they reported zero. So I don't know what they're calling in-school suspension, but maybe there's a, an informed term they're using for in-school suspension, but they're not reporting it to the state as in-school suspension.
Okay, and we also have, and what do you call restorative justice? If we have that in two of our schools, are you gonna say we don't have that?
I'm, the question is, do you support high-stakes testing?
Do I think that, the que...
Do, do, do... Do you support eliminating high-stakes testing?
The system of testing under the Performance Index scores, I think it could be improved. I, I agree that it should not be so high stakes, and I think that that is a state law that, that basically we just have to deal with. But I agree that, yeah, as I said, high-stakes testing, to the degree that it is such high stakes, yeah, I think that it does need to be improved, and, um, it could be revamped. And, I mean, basically, the grading system is, is... And, I mean, basically, the grading system is, is not fair to urban districts.
Thank you. Ms. Roundtree?
I think as long as there is an educational system run by the state and that's our form of government, if the state owns education, we're gonna have some form of testing, whether it's high stakes or not, I don't know. I think we have to look at the legislators, because they're the individuals that have the most influence on, on how and when and where students are tested. So, I think that it does need to be revisited. It's new, and it's something that we just have to, to kind of, to disaggregate. We have to study that test, and we have to have a better understanding of it. When the district has twenty-four performance indexes and only receives two passing scores, we need to find out why. I mean, that, that intrigues me. Why? What is the problem? You know, we just can't take for granted that we have a, a school district that can only, only achieve two out of twenty-four. But it's a complex issue, but it doesn't start with the district, it starts at the state level. So, we have to be investigators and, and go to the legislators and, and ask them to help us better understand that, that test and the index. You can't win what you don't know. I'm not gonna play any game if I don't know the rules. So, we have got to have a better understanding of that test, whether we like it or not until it changes. We can't ask them to revamp it until we understand it. So, we've got to understand that test to make recommendations to the legislators on how to change. And in the meantime, we've got to do a better job in preparing our children to pass the test. Some schools do Saturday boot camps. Why aren't all schools doing Saturday boot camps? If the test is here to stay or even for a little while, let's do a better job in preparing our children to pass that test.
Thank you. Mr. Hickman?
I do not support it, but we all know who's benefiting from it. Lobbyists are going to Washington, they're going up to the State House and saying, "Let's find out how many prisons we gotta build." It's a corporation. Those numbers about those kids don't mean a thing to none of us. Kids don't benefit from it, the school district don't benefit from it. Just those corporations. So, as far as I'm concerned, it's a dead issue, because there's nothing to do about it. There is something to do about it, but our community, you don't have to get off their behind.
Come on.
They go out to step up, stand up, and speak. I don't care if you belong to one organization, that's bougie, or whatever. We got to come together with a common goal and speak up. And as long as you're sitting around quiet in the corner and say, "Well, there's nothing I can do about it", nothing's gonna be done. Thank you.
Thank you. As a result of test-based accountability regimes such as the No Child Left Behind Act, schools have incentives now to push out low-performing students to boost overall test scores. And I'm in no way saying Dayton's doing that. I don't know. That's something we have to look at. But there have been studies in other places that showed that students who were low-performing got needed out longer since disciplinary actions than students who were not, than the high-performing students for similar offenses, okay? Uh, this punishment gap grew substantially over the time when the tests were being administered, at least in one study. So, it'd be interesting for us to do a study in Dayton to see if that kind of punishment gap is being used within the city of Dayton. Black students are disproportionately represented at every stage of the school-to-prison pipeline. African-American students are far more likely than their white peers to be suspended, expelled, or arrested for the same kind of conduct at school. In twenty-twelve, African-American youth made up sixty-four percent of Dayton Public School population. However, they accounted for eighty percent of out-of-school suspensions. There is no evidence that blacks misbehave to a greater degree than white students. They are, however, punished more severely, often for behaviors that are less serious. Minority students with disabilities are particularly vulnerable since many schools regard jail as a difficult, as, as a default for special education placement for poor minority children. African-American students with disabilities are three times more than likely to receive a short-term suspension than their white counterparts and are more than four times as likely to end up in correctional facilities. The question is, in recent years, statistics have indicated a substantial racial disparity in disciplinary actions towards minority students, particularly black students. What is your explanation of these statistics? And what do you believe the solution to remedy this issue is? Joe Lacy?
And those, are those national statistics?
The statistics I read was particularly Dayton Public Schools in twenty-twelve.
That, and, and the statistics are?
Uh, African-American youth made up sixty-four percent of Dayton Public School population but accounted for over eighty percent of the out-of-school suspensions.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the que, and your question is, do you, do you feel that?
So, uh, the question is, uh, in recent years, the statistics have indicated a substantial racial disparity in disciplinary actions towards minority students and particularly black students. Uh, so what is your explanation for these statistics? And what do you believe the solution is to remedy the issue?
Well, I mean, as I've said before, I think restorative justice as a system is the best solution. Do I feel that within a system that, um, that has as many African-American administrators as the Dayton Public Schools has, and the many, the, the number of, um, African-American staff, I don't think, I don't think it, there is systemic, um, racial discrimination in Dayton Public Schools.
Mr. Hickman?
I'm not familiar with these statistics. But, bottom line, it's gonna have to start at home in the community. It can't start anywhere else. And then you gotta think about the X Factor. It hasn't been in our schools for a while. I'm pretty sure most of you know what that is. We gotta do better. This lady over here is a pit. Gotta know this man over here. This lady's sitting back here with the glass, and she gotta know the lady back there. Pink star. Get to know each other. Get to know each other's kids. Talk to the kids. That's one thing I don't see. I don't see you talking to these kids. You walk past them like they weren't there. And when you talk to these kids, they wanna know why. Take time to talk to them. You don't have to be a parent. You see the kids walking out in the middle of the street, what do you do? Drive by, or do you stop and say, "Could you get out of the street before you get hurt?" And majority of them get out of the street. So, this is the community's job. Nobody else. Thank you.
Ms. Roundtree?
When I think about some of the issues that are going on in the public schools, I understand that it's very complex. I was with the superintendent this past Saturday and President Joe Lacy at a retreat addressing these very same issues. And one of the factors that the superintendent mentioned was that the schools in West Dayton perform significantly lower than the schools in East Dayton. And you wanna say, and you, and you actually said, "Why is that?" Well, someone is assigning the least experienced teachers in West Dayton. We know that some of that has to do with the experience of the educators. We know that if it's a young inexperienced teacher and a male, African-American male, uh, is, is, is considered aggressive or threatening, they, they're going to be sent to the principal's office. For a more experienced teacher, someone's been teaching like myself for thirty years, I'm gonna say, "Hold it, hold it, hold it." So, we have to make sure that our teachers are culturally competent, that they know how to deal with the population that they're assigned. It goes back to training. That's, that's the bottom line for me. We can't work on the assumption that teachers are prepared to deal with the students that they're assigned. We have to start with square one. There should be an orientation on the first day of school at every single school, every single year. And the orientation ought to start being able to set the standards, the standards of expectation, and the standards of conduct, both inside the classroom and the cafeteria and the hallway. I've been in schools where you can walk down the hallway and hear a pin drop. And I've been in cafeterias where the principal screamed and howled for twenty minutes. I wanted to get up and tell the kids to be quiet. Children will behave if you train them to behave. So, it comes from top down. The administrators and the teachers must receive the, the proper training in order to deal with the students that they have to serve.
Thank you. We appreciate all of the, the comments that you've given and the questions that you've answered, and we're coming to the end of our program. And we said that each person would give him two minutes to kind of give a closing comment, uh, and Mr. Hickman, we're gonna start with you.
I'd like to thank everyone for this opportunity today, especially this organization. But I'd like to instill in everyone that the board should not do their job if no one comes to the meeting, if no one shows any interest. We have to, what we do is reflect the interest of the community, what the community wants. You don't come, that means you don't want anything, and everything is kosher. You show up and voice your opinion, and then we gotta get busy. Well, I ain't got there yet, but still, the board's gotta get busy. So, until our community consciously understands the importance of being involved in the education of these children, and I'm talking about church, I'm talking about neighborhoods, neighborhood organizations, fraternities, everyone, it will be a long time before this gets done. So, we need your help. Thank you.
Mr. Lacy?
I've been on the board eight years now, and I'm currently the board president. And as I've said, my daughter's in kindergarten, and this district does mean quite a bit to me. And if there are, are some perceptions, some perceptions that I think that are particularly accurate, um, then maybe this district does need to work on those perceptions, and so that we can go forward as a community. Thank you.
I am ready to serve this community. I'm ready to make our district better. I am unwilling to accept an F on a report card when it comes to education. I grew up right here in inner West Dayton and the hood, where people had low expectations and didn't think that anyone from this neighborhood could ever amount to anything. But I proved them wrong. I went to Sinclair Community College and walked most days to get there. I went to Central State, earned a bachelor's degree. I went to the University of Dayton and earned a master's degree in education, and then I went back and earned a law degree. I want to set an example for the young people in our community so they know that they can do it. But it takes hard work. It took a community. It took neighbors' caring, it took teachers' caring, it took hard work. We have to have high standards. I will never be associated with losing district. I will not accept an F on a report card. I will find out what it takes to get that F to a better grade, because we're a better community, and it's not gonna happen by screaming and hollering and being upset. We have to have deep analysis of the issue and figure out what we did right. We have an A school. Stifler's got an A. We have a B school. Decker got a B. Why don't we sit down and figure out what are they doing right? And, and emulate that in some of the other schools? But it will take all of us. It will take volunteers to come out on Saturday to help them with their boot camps. If that's what it takes to get these kids to pass the, the test, then it means that they don't have money to hire people, so some of you all have to volunteer like we do. I'm not on the board, but the thing that I do right now is train tutors for the board. So, come October the nineteenth at the YWCA, come pick up one of my cards. I'll be happy to give it to you. We offer free tutoring to community members to go into the Dayton Public Schools and to be a volunteer tutor to help children learn to breathe. You don't have to have a college degree, you don't have to have a high school degree. All you have to have is compassion.
Thank you. Let's give, let's give everybody a turn out. I wanna thank all of you all for turning out. I think this has been a valuable, uh, uh, this, uh, time. Um, I want to remind people to please complete the contact cards and turn them back in. Um, I want, I would be remiss, I'm sorry. I'm a teacher, and I teach race and racism and American law, and I have my students in the audience. So, I cannot, I have to deal with one of the things we deal with, that when you deal with systems and structures, that, that the race of the people running the system and structure doesn't change unless the system and structure change. And that, so you can get black people running something and have systemic racism.
Yes.
You can get black people, uh, administrating stuff, because if all they do is continue the same system, that system may, I'm not, have embedded racism. So, those are things I teach my student, and I couldn't let the comment pass without reinforcing the idea that, uh, systems, that the race of the person doesn't affect the, the, whether or not systemic racism is there. Um, I wanna thank the many organizations that have been leaders in this community for a very, very long time on the issues of mass incarceration, on the issues of violence in our community. Uh, obviously, the Adams Project that has been at the forefront of this, uh, uh, this, uh, these problems, uh, the Black Men's Think Tank. I wanna thank the students from my Race and Racism in the Law class and the black law students who came out to help us today. Um, I wanna thank the Dakota Center. And I especially want to thank the Nation of Islam. The Nation of Islam has, had, sat at the table with us from the beginning that we started organizing them, and every single meeting, they had someone there helping us. And so, a special thank to the Nation of Islam and to Wesley Center, uh, as well. I want to, the mayor and commissioners are going to be tomorrow night at the Wesley Center. Uh, I really encourage you to turn out, and it'll be the same format and hopefully as informative. We have a little snack out in the hallway. You can talk with the candidates and meet them. Uh, thank you, everybody.